All right, I would like to now call this meeting's order. Order of the trustees meeting, January 16th, 2024. Welcome, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Metzschelbers? Here. Trustee Appenheim? Here. Trustee Seiden is absent. Mayor Shapiro?
I'm here.
May I have a floor?
Can we do know that our remote audio works pretty well? So that's good. After we've got it, please all stand before the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Pastor Tim Higgins to please lift some.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where we should under that end of the world with the evening of justice.
One of the things that I was able to do late last year was to participate in Project Share at North Suburban Church. And it's the reason that I'm asking Pastor Tim to step up just a second. But when I, it was my 30th year of doing it, and what I experienced and what I was inspired about was the hundreds of volunteers that helped. And thousands of laundry baskets full of food and other items that were packed for people in need. And each year I do it, I'm more and more inspired by those who are helping, those who are most fortunate. Pastor Tim, you've spearheaded this for a number of years, and I think I'm talking to someone in the church that there was a huge number of people that had been the beneficiaries of your goodwill over these years, thousands. And it's remarkable. So I would ask you maybe just to talk to us a little bit about what you've been doing these years and share with us the good deeds that you've done.
Thank you, Mayor Shapiro. My name's Tim Higgins, and for the last seven and a half years, I have been pastor in North Suburban Church, right at the corner of Lake Cook and Waukegan, just a small church still, but for 65 years the church has been at that corner and have enjoyed just a wonderful relationship with the village of Deerfield. So appreciated all of you. This was our 20th year hosting Project Share. Over that time, we've had the privilege of serving 23,500 families at Thanksgiving time. This year it's 1,000.
Twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, 23,500, yeah. And so this year we were able to do 1,400 baskets of Thanksgiving meals. Coronation's already sent me $4,000 to do that, and thanks to some generous partners on the supply side, we were able to bless those families. And we go through partner ministries who are on the ground with the relationships. So some of those that you might know would be CASA, the Court of Police and Special Advocates for Children and Foster Care System in Lake County, the Deerfield Township Food Pantry, Alquintin, Mariva Food Pantry up in Waukegan, Trinity International University, has a lot of international students who are blessed by those meals at Thanksgiving time. And so some of those Project Share partnerships have turned into longer-term relationships. We're able to support those folks throughout the year in other ways. But yeah, the need of Mayor Shapiro has come out and soon with the last three years, but an army of volunteers comes out and we get to fill baskets and people part of the church, outside the church have been able to come and do that. And I just want to thank you again, Mayor Shapiro, for coming out. I was actually just last week witnessing a conversation between a long-term member of our church with a newcomer, and they were telling about our church, and I mentioned Project Share, and they said, "Mayor, you and the mayor's come out the last three years." And she's just, so you know that, you know, that is noticed, it is appreciated, and so as we try to be good neighbors here in town and not just leach off the village and the area, we want to be good neighbors here. And so we appreciate your support in that. Thank you so much.
Of course. We're so grateful to have you and what you do, as well as the 23,500 families are grateful for everything that you've done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
We have represented Becky Ergman and Jen Ponticas from the Deerfield Parent Network that would like to make a presentation.
Actually, I'm Becky Ergman. This is Jessica Berger. Oh, sorry. We have, Jessica is in charge of our after-party, which happens in May, and I'm co-president of Deerfield Parent Network. Deerfield Parent Network is an organization we've been in existence for a very long time. We fall under one of the parent organizations of Deerfield High School, but we serve, I would say at this point, we've really extended our outreach to the entire Deerfield community, Riverwoods, Bannockburn, and Highland Park, especially this year with our partnerships with District 113, 109, 112. They've all contributed monies to bring in very large-name speakers to our community. We just had one at the end of November, Julie Rethcott-Haines. She's kind of a parenting guru and expert, and we had over 400 parents at Deerfield High School for that event. And we will be bringing another event, February 6th. We have Devora Heitner. She's actually a local parent and author, and she will be talking about growing up in public, what it's like to grow up in a digital world for our kids. And we've promoted this through all of our school districts, and also library has our information, we send it to our villages to promote. And so the reason we're here tonight is kind of to tell you a little more about our general organization, what we do, which is we provide a lot of information programming for parents in our communities to empower them. But also, we provide a program that came about years ago from a tragedy. The Deerfield After-party is specific to our seniors at Deerfield High School. I would say that is one of our programming things that is just Deerfield, not and Riverwoods and Bannockburn, the kids who are at Deerfield High School, not necessarily the kids at Highland Park High School. But there was a tragedy after a dance where students died, and parents in this community rallied and created an event where, to keep kids safe, they go to prom at a hotel, and then they get bussed back to the Sack Center in Deerfield, and we kind of lock them in for a night of fun. Everything is donated, everything is paid for by donations for that night. And so Deerfield Parent Network kind of is this overall umbrella, and we have the one hand that does all of the programming and parenting, you know, advice and people that we bring in to speak to our community, and that's all done through donations. And then we do separate is after-party. We have two separate accounts that fund those things. We keep our monies for after-parties separate. Those are donations that corporations, we do fundraisers through the school, we, all kinds of stuff. Jessica can talk more about.
This is our 17th year now, believe it or not. We let, yeah, it's awesome. It's amazing that we've been able to sustain the program for that long. We lock them in, some of them, until the moment the prom ends, until 3:00 in the morning, to make sure it's, you know, substance-free, safe, and completely donation-based, like everything we get, food, and the entire party is funded through donations. And again, we're, you know, got the Sack Center again this year, and we're going to be holding it for our 17th year in, I mean, 18th. It'll be May 18th until about 3:00 in the morning. So we wanted to come to you, and Becky can explain a little bit more about, and we'll send this to you, the calendar year of all the programming that DPN puts forth throughout the year. Again, the DPN programming is funded in one account, right? And then after-party, which, you know, the party itself, to entertain 400 kids or so, you know, we need, you know.
Yeah, good luck with that.
And everybody, I mean, everybody comes. I don't say, not many, it's 90% turnout, you know, but the party, you know, costs us about $28,000 a year to put on just the party. So we just wanted to come because we wanted you to understand the difference between DPN and after-party. While after-party finds itself under the umbrella of DPN, it really does operate as a separate entity, so we wanted to make sure that as we came to you asking for donations, that you understood the distinction between the DPN programming. And I think you also wanted to talk to them about promotion a little bit.
Right. So we, we've been in communication with David Fitzgerald, and he has been helping us retweet, not retweet, repost Facebook posts and kind of promote some of our programming through maybe the E-News letter and things like that. But we tend to put on eight to 10 programs every year, and so we are always, you know, looking for, we had CASA Behavior Health come last year and do a gambling presentation for parents. We've had, you know, we have teams in the law where we have a judge, a defense attorney, a Deerfield police officer, all sitting on a panel along with the DPA students and kind of talk about the ramifications of what happens when teens are heading towards adulthood and get in trouble with the law. And so we try to do things that pertain to the community, that parents would be involved or want to have more information about. But those speakers, when they come in, it's not that they ask for a payment, but we make a donation to their charity of choice. We have students panelists sometimes on panels that we give them a gift card or whatever it is. So DPN needs some funding to run ours, and then after-party obviously needs a lot of funding for theirs. So in the past, Deerfield has been very generous, but there's been some confusion about when you guys have made donations, like one gets requested in the spring and it goes to after-party, and then in the fall, usually Deerfield Parent Network is making a request, and then it's, why are we getting two requests? And so we just thought, we'll come and tell you about our programming, tell you what we do, and if it's easier, we can make one request and just you designate.
Let's just say it's easier.
And then you designate, you know, like you said, Riverwoods has, we met, we did the same thing, we did the same thing with them, because there was confusion there too. And they, and they, you don't have to follow the exact suit, but they said, "Come visit in the spring and ask us for $2,000," and you guys will know that that means to designate $1,000 to DPN and $1,000 to the after-party for that year. And because we have the same treasurer, it's very easy. Same treasurer, same work.
Your invitation is the best form of flattery. And so we'll ask you to do the same thing. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. So you will hear from us in the spring only. We will not be retweeting to you in the fall where there'll be confusion with multiple letters.
And totally this clarifies when we come to ask you DPN programming and after-party programming that we're asking.
But more importantly, this tells us what you do.
Right.
And what you've been doing for 17 years.
Right.
Yeah.
To a great extent, keeping our kids safe.
Right.
So thank you for that.
No, thank you. And we appreciate the support.
Thank you for the support.
Yes, absolutely. And yeah, we look forward to a great year, and we'll pass, we'll kind of pass this around. I think David's going to hang this for us, and we can email a copy as well, so everybody can stay on top of all of our programming videos.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. How's it? Minutes of our previous meeting, December 18th, 2023, coming of the whole in January 2nd, 2024. Order trustees, do I have a motion?
Move it forward.
Second, one collection of files.
Yeah, first.
On Deerfield, Deerfield January 2nd meeting, I was absent, but it had me moving to adjourn. And I think Rebecca was absent, and she seconded the motion.
Yeah, I had a question earlier. I'm not reflecting in the committee of the whole, and I was in attendance, but I collected it already.
Okay. Can you guys read that?
We do. Is that a, is that a question?
Absolutely. Good. I could make those corrections. One of my teachers would say, "Good close reading." With those items in mind, do I, we have a motion in a second to prove those minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Treasuries report, Eric.
This is November 2, 2023, the treasuries report represents 92% of the year, so we're almost there. Just a couple items to point out in this month's report. Gross sales tax increase, that's due largely to economic incentive activity, which then results in a large expenditure in the finance department. But also the net sales tax, so net of that, that activity also increased, which is due at least in part to internet sales activity, one-time revenue there, but it is good to get that in. Water and sewer billings decrease, that's real typical this time of year as we move out of the higher-usage months. Hotel tax reflects payments from all six hotels and back payment from one of the hotels, so we're back caught up with everyone there. We're also comparable to pre-COVID. Not quite, but significantly better than we were even last year and the year before in COVID. So looking forward for the full year, pre-COVID, we topped out about 2.5 million. For the full year, this year we'll top out about 2.3. So be close. So, yeah, a nice recovery.
Yes, absolutely.
Multiple expenditures in November include construction and engineering costs, budgeted transfer to the refuse fund, debt service payments, we purchased some water meters, and made the final payout of our 2021 bond proceeds. Large expenditures to come next month include the village's contribution to the police pension fund and an allocation of personnel costs to the refuse fund for our leaf collection season. Those are your highlights. Happy to answer any questions that there may be. Is anyone have any questions there? Okay, thank you.
Those are payable. So a motion.
Move it forward. Second.
Welcome, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby? Yeah. Trustee Metzschelbers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now's the time during our meeting where we allow the public comment on a non-agenda item. So if there's, I have a sign-up sheet, but if there's anyone who'd like to speak about a matter that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Okay, no public comment, which takes us to our consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. I'll read the titles and then ask for motion. Item 24011, a resolution approving a paid family currently being pilot program for certain village employees. And item 2404, a resolution selecting and designating a delegate and alternate delegate to the motions, I can read, to the Northeastern Illinois Public Safety Training Academy Board of Directors. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda given? Second. Welcome, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby? Yeah. Trustee Metzschelbers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have no old business. We have, first item of business is item 2410, ordinance amendment, Chapter 22 of the Illinois Remissible Code of the Village of Deerfield, regulating unscheduled bus stops. And before I have Andrew, or I said, before I have you talk about this, I do have something I'd like to say. A week ago or so, I posted a statement regarding asylum seekers and migrants. It's on our website. It was also re-blasted. I'm not going to repeat that, but I'm going to talk about certain parts of that statement as an introduction to what you're just going to offer to us for the ordinance. I don't know who said it, but someone once said, "It's never a wrong thing to do something that's right." So with them in mind, very soon, in a couple minutes, our board's going to consider an ordinance that's intended to address reasonable regulations to ensure that buses that carry migrants and asylum seekers leaving from primarily Central American countries do not leave people unannounced or late or abandoned and cold, and that their safety, as well as the safety of our residents, is assured. The ordinance is intended to make sure that those who are seen as asylum or migrants are not randomly left outside, are not randomly redirected on a bus, but rather are redirected on a bus that goes downtown where their services, intake services are there to help them. It's intended to steer those, I'll call wayward buses, to the appropriate place where services downtown can be given to the many thousands of folks who are from different countries from Venezuela, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, et cetera. In addition, it addresses consequences to bus drivers and bus companies which fail to meet the regulations that would be in the ordinance. Since August of '22, Chicago has welcomed over 35,000 new arrivals from the southern border. In at least three weeks, the region, this region, suburban Chicago region, has seen an increase in drop-offs of new arrivals to the suburbs. Several residents have reached out to me about how we can address the recent influx of migrants and asylum seekers coming to the Chicago area. They've addressed it with a spirit of compassion and dignity, and I appreciate everyone in the community who's reached out with such care and concern. The Illinois Emergency Management Agency has determined that the role of local governments like this village is to assist migrants safely to the city of Chicago Intake Center. In that regard, at this time, our primary responsibility is to connect individuals who may need assistance with resources and help them get downtown. The city has adopted regulations for buses transporting migrants that include prior notification of time and place of arrival. And when a driver does not or will not comply with those rules, to avoid fines or punishments that the city may have adopted, it drops people off anyplace, suburban locations at any time without notice. We've seen this happen to our nearby communities. We've seen this happen to many regions in Chicago. On most occasions, buses have been redirected to the designated location in Chicago, and on many occasions, police will escort folks on those buses downtown. On others, migrants are provided a metro ticket as another means of getting downtown. In some cases, those on the bus have been dropped off at random locations without notice, without winter clothes, and without a means of immediately making it to the intake center. We are in regular contact with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, Lake County Office of Emergency Management, the Cook County Office of Emergency Management, the city of Chicago, Pats of Lake County, transportation companies of our neighboring communities, our legislative leaders, and others to assess how we can respond as humanely and as compassionately as possible. To be clear, we are keenly aware of this ever-evolving situation, and we will be able to respond to those needs of folks who may be arriving to the village soon while also maintaining their security, their safety, and the security and safety of our residents. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor Berg. I'll discuss some of the specifics of the ordinance. And to be clear, this ordinance intentionally regulates not only buses traveling from Texas to the village with migrants and asylum seekers, but applies to any unscheduled, unannounced, one-way routing and dropping off of passengers arriving in the village from outside of our corporate limits without pre-arranged provisions such as food, shelter, or other resources by the bus or transportation providers. The extreme weather this week only reinforces that these types of unscheduled arrivals jeopardize the health and safety of the passengers that are disembarking. It constitutes inhumane conditions, creates dangerous conditions for the individuals being dropped off, and is otherwise a nuisance and public safety concern. The ordinance requires intercity bus operators to submit an application to the village manager or designate five business days in advance, and establishes permitted times and locations for passengers to disembark. Both specifics are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and excluding federal and state holidays, and the location being the Lake Cook Road Metro Parking Station. Metro has reviewed a draft of this ordinance and has no objections to this proposal. The ordinance requires that applicants detail how the passengers will be cared for, housed, and fed upon their arrival, and it requires that the village's designated staff member or police officer meet the bus prior to disembarking the passengers to ensure that the passengers make it to their final destination. The ordinance also provides for a varying degree of fines and penalties on the bus company if there is non-compliance with the ordinance. Happy to answer any other specific questions, but that's a summary of the ordinance's criteria.
One of the things that I read in one of the newspapers is something that was proposed to the city for consideration, that the previous orders were to simply direct them to the quote, maybe in a suburb in the city, period, when they got here. And the suggestion, and I think this is probably still being considered, that if it is outside of the 5 o'clock deadline, that the community to which it's going has to provide at least over eight facilities, especially in a weather like this, and then I gather that they will be taken down to the city the next day. Is that something that you've looked into or might possibly consider?
In our experience, talking to municipalities that have received buses outside of the city of Chicago's designated hours, which are 8:00 to 5:00, they have been, city of Chicago has accepted them if they have been, if the bus has been escorted by a municipal police officer to the city. So we would, we have the call sheet, if you will, we have the contacts. Based on that experience, if we were to call the city of Chicago and say, "There's a bus here. We know it's after 5:00 PM, but we're going to escort them if need be with a police officer," the city of Chicago has accepted them. So that's been the experience.
So we are prepared for that?
Yes.
If that happened?
Yes.
Thank you. There are also notices at Union Station in ODB, so that when migrants and asylum seekers get tickets to get on a train, there's information for them, and there's also kind of a lead call to the, I call it the intake center, it's not very artful, to have those folks be picked up and go to intake when they're coming on a train.
Our mentor staff has been versed on how to handle this as well, how to guide people off of the train and through the building to where they need to go.
I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the proposed ordinance is very well drafted, and I think we go to counsel for doing so. I think this is a humanitarian effort that's needed and needed now, and I think the proposed ordinance addresses everything that needs to be done, not only for the humanitarian conditions of the migrants and asylum seekers, but also as far as penalties for bus companies and bus drivers who don't choose to follow the laws and ordinances. So I am quite supportive of the proposed ordinance.
I also support the ordinance. My question is, how do we get the word out that we do handle this ordinance and is creating the law? I am aware that all the municipalities around are addressing this issue, but I would love to be assured that any transit company, anybody bringing trailers in is aware of what the moves are.
I know one thing we contemplate, what other communities have done, is to notify the governor's office in Texas, notify the emergency management of Texas with a certified copy of their ordinance, as well as notifying the bus companies licensed in Texas. So I think we're trying to figure out how to do that better, but that's kind of the approach that several municipalities are taking, is let's just try to, and then circulate that information.
I wonder if this does extend, this is not just targeted to buses that bring migrants. It's not for one-way travel, but because so many municipalities are adopting similar regulations, bus companies hopefully around the Chicago area also will take note, and you know, if they're reading the newspaper.
Right.
And we'll see and be making sure that they comply as well with our ordinance. So, you know, I think it's particularly, this is definitely how media attention over the last couple of weeks, I think people are taking note.
I just don't want there to be an unsafe condition where people claim, "We didn't know."
Right.
We'd like everybody to know.
And thank you to your staff and staff, et cetera, all the producers, too, that I think is very well written. One of the things I know that you're doing, that we're doing this group, we're trying to see what other communities are doing so that we're as consistent as possible, so as to not have one community, a bus company take advantage of one community versus another community that may be softer on certain things or the other. So thank you for helping us with that.
Yeah, I'm supportive, too. I have to say, when this first came up, I did a lot of reading because you never wanted to feel like we're doing something either because everybody else is or because we don't want the problem, you know, of housing people or something at our town. And I really feel like it is not the case here. I feel like this is a, it's a really good plan for now, to your point. It's ever-changing. We're going to have to keep thinking about this. But everything I read just talks a lot about being really able to treat these people with humanity and make sure they are safe and they're able to meet the family members they're coming to. In many cases, they're actually trying to meet somebody who's going to take them home. And if they're here, they're not with their family. And I just keep coming back to, how do we just make sure they're safe? And I think we're really lucky, we live in a town that we can escort them. I know I asked if we have the resources and the team members to be able to pull away from the village to go escort, wouldn't need other... from the village to go escort, wouldn't need it, and the answer was a resounding yes. Is that, that's correct? Yes?
Yes.
So I really like that, and it's not just sending them on their way, but really just making sure they're getting where they need to be to be safe. So I am also supportive.
And I understand that our local community are together in working on this as well, and contributing to whatever kind of measures are necessary. I think that's correct, isn't it?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you. I have met with them, and they have a plan in place in the event that critical needs need to be serviced, at a time and place that where we can't get folks downtown. And, um, public comment? I see there's some folks here tonight. Is there anyone here in the audience who'd like to talk about this?
Hello, my name's Danielle Maldonado. I've been our village resident now for 50 years. So I really would like to applaud the village for being proactive. Very often, we come out and we're full of complaints or just really upset about what the village isn't doing, but I am absolutely here today to applaud the village and really going ahead and taking care of the community, and taking care of members of other communities, like some of our trustees have said, and making sure that we are all safe. And I really want to thank you, because it's definitely been on everybody's mind, not just because we're worried that they're coming into our communities, but as a sanctuary state, regardless of where your political ideologies lie, it doesn't matter, it is where we are, and therefore, this is just kicking the can down the road, because this is just one piece of the puzzle that probably will hit us in a different way another time. But I do appreciate that you are taking care of the first piece of the puzzle that does seem to be something that's gonna dog all of our communities right now. So as long as the city can take care of it, they're just trying to sort of make their way about it. But we really appreciate you, this community, the people in my neighborhood that have all been staying home with their children today, trying to figure out who can come out and speak. And we really do appreciate that you are taking care of the community members, and like I said, we have people that are trying to find a safer to the city, to find somewhere safer than where they're coming from.
So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So with all in mind, we have an ordinance as their motion. Move up there, vote on it. Second. Welcome, please.
One, which is, the ordinance calls for a two-thirds vote, so it will go into effect immediately, but because there's fines and penalties, if it's not a two-thirds vote, then it will take 10 days to take effect. So it is fine to vote that, and so if you think it's prudent for this to go into effect immediately, it takes two-thirds of the corporate authorities. Thanks.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Metz Childers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the mayor's also voted yes.
So just, yes, I want to vote, and yes, I have six out of seven meeting the younger requirement.
So this will go into effect immediately upon signage execution by the mayor. Thank you, everyone, for supporting this. Thank you. Resolution authorizing document scanning services, Justice.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Department has over 75 years of plans and other documents stored for current and former developments. We're talking tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of documents in the basement. These files are mostly commercial development plans along with other historical subdivision plans. As we learned last year, when we had the sprinkler head break and flood, about 85,000 documents, of the importance of digitizing these records since most of them are irreplaceable. So it also clears up a bunch of room in the basement. So the village has used microsystems for decades. They scanned 85,000 documents last year, along with many other documents. The village budgeted $35,000 for document scanning and recommends awarding the contract to Microsystems Inc. of Northbrook for the full budget amount. With that, are there any questions?
So that do all of our documents, are we scrolling through?
It's hard with this, because the documents range from anywhere from 26 by 34 to little business cards and notes. So it's a per-document rate that we have. It should do the majority of them. It also helps us do a little bit of spring cleaning, where some of the documents we no longer need and can later dispose of. So it should do the majority of them, yes.
Any other questions? From the public? Yes, sir.
I actually came here to listen to the last panel, or the last item, and I was gonna say something, and thank God, spoke off the night of the cloud.
You wanna come up here and take a piss or something?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry to dress up.
No, it's, there's no, you're fine.
I'm actually owner of Microsystems, and I had no idea this was coming in front of me. I just wanted to thank you for even listening to him. We've done your work for years, and we appreciate your business. I wanted to say that. I came here not with this intention whatsoever. Chris Wilkie, I've been resident for 35 years. My lighter reach is at the Park District. Thank you.
Thank you, that's saving your documents.
Yes.
All right. Double motion to approve the resolution. Move up there. Second. Welcome, please.
And not just because Chris is here. Trustee Metz Childers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
How are you doing over there, Elaine?
All good.
Any questions so far?
Just don't ask me the temperature.
Justin, what are you doing with the old document center, which is recycling?
The majority of those were shredded. We did lose 13 boxes worth of files that were too moldy that, well, we weren't able to stand those anywhere. So that is, it's unfortunate, because we lost all streets that start with B and C. I mean, I just, you know, 10 streets with C off the top of my head, so that's, I mean, that is unfortunate. We do have about 14 years-ish of records in munis for some of the old building files, but a lot of the original plans are all gone now. Yeah, and now everything else has been scanned in for building permits, which for FOIA is also very helpful. Which everybody who buys a house now has figured in a FOIA, exactly, of the record.
Okay. Ordinance in my new chapter seven, this is called regarding food truck licensing.
At two previous town meetings, staff reviewed food truck regulations along with mass food delivery regulations with the village board, and then worked with village council to develop an ordinance. We also worked extensively with the DBR Chamber of Commerce, and their input is included in this memo. So some of the highlights of this ordinance are food trucks will be required to apply annually for a $100 food truck license, and then ice cream trucks for a $50 ice cream truck license. This limits now as of operation by food trucks, limits food truck operations to no more than once a month at an individual property. This stops business from basically hosting a around-the-clock food truck on the property, but also allows hotels that want to have a food truck there for some of their tenants to do that, you know, on one Friday a month. It requires vendors to secure all waste and to recycle, and include recycling, and this also allows ice cream trucks to park on the right-of-way in residential areas. We didn't want to ban the neighborhood groups on Thursdays or Fridays that have a food truck that come, or ice cream truck that comes for 20 to 30 minutes. Stayed silly a lot as this, and this bans mass food delivery, along with introducing fines for noncompliant vehicles. By adopting this ordinance, that will be ability to better regulate food trucks, make sure that they're licensed and insured, that they have a health department license, which we always want to make sure of. Because around the border, we have a lot of Cook County trucks that come up, but they don't have the Lake County license, so making sure that they're regulated that way. And that basically sums it up. With that, are there any questions?
Assistant pack ice cream truck, a little elderly game, that type of service?
So that is technically not allowed. So the trucks that just randomly show up to park district events and things like that, we would license them as part of this. If they had an agreement with the park district, they could be allowed. There are just random trucks that show up to events, but that would not be allowed, unless, again, they have an agreement with the park district in place. We do have problems with those, because a lot of times, those are the unlicensed trucks that don't have a health department permit. We don't really know what they're selling, so you know, that would, again, without an agreement.
And all the regular ice cream trucks that come to neighborhoods are agreed to contract it for, by the neighborhood, by the neighbors ahead of time. They don't just show up.
It's really just essentially two ice cream trucks that do 20-minute blocks all the community. So we know who they are, we'll talk with them, we'll make sure they comply. They held the health department licenses already. And we do treat trucks differently, so when you physically scoop something, your ice cream truck, when it's prepackaged, or sorry, when you scoop something, it's a food truck, when it's prepackaged, it's an ice cream truck. So there's that fine line with the health department, so.
Well, then it's to protect people, so.
It's good to get the scoop.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, I'd say, over the last year, we've noticed a lot of food trucks unfortunately closing. You know, I think it was a lot bigger during COVID, so now that people are returning to restaurants, there have been less food trucks. So it's not as big of a problem as it once was.
Any other questions for Justice? Public comment? Nothing? Double motion.
Easy, please.
Second. Welcome, please.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yeah.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Metz Childers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And the 2405, a resolution authorizing additional expenditures for the Waukegan Road Watermane Project. As you know, last year, we completed the Waukegan Road Watermane Project. This project replaced all watermane items within the Waukegan Road one right-of-way, from Deerfield Road up to North Avenue. The intent of this project, again, was to not only replace the aging infrastructure we had along the IDOT right-of-way, but also to do this work in advance of the upcoming IDOT resurfacing project, which through IDOT is gonna be starting in April. So whilst completing this project in a timely manner that we did last year, allows IDOT now to follow up with their resurfacing project, which if you've driven Waukegan Road, you know, there are definitely locations that need that work. Unfortunately, as with many construction projects, we found things underground that we were not anticipating. This goes from downtown water services that were encountered overnight, to the installation of new valves, hydrants, water services, and all the associated patching that comes along with that. However, the primary driver of this project's additional work was on Rorlick Road. This watermane in the area has seen a lot of breaks. If you remember, we rerouted this early, or late, I guess, 2022 for material procurement, and over that winter, we did see more breaks in this area. Decision was made to increase the limit further with Waukegan Road through Rorlick Road, oh, sorry, Rorlick Court intersection, thereby allowing any future watermane impacts in this area to not impact these eight homes, eight or nine homes along Rorlick Court. So going an additional 200 feet down Rorlick Road now is putting it in a position where they're not going to be impacted with any future watermane breaks that we've had. And since we finished the watermane work in August, we've had two along the road. So this is the reason why it's on our CIP, that area to replace the watermane in that area. But going just a little bit additional further allows those residents along the cul-de-sac to be with water when the watermane in that area does have an issue. All right, so all in all, with all those additional items, firehead and water services are at extension along Rorlick Road. We are about $200,000 over the project. It was a $4 million project, so that's 5%. However, it is worth noting that, if you remember, last year, we did not reroute a street rehab project. That totaled $350,000, and the reason we do have those is our favorable pricing. Yes, I'll talk a little bit more about that on the upcoming street rehab gem item, but what I'm bringing up is, we do have buffer in our IRF capital improvement plan to absorb this overage. So while it is an overage on this project, we do have the funds in the budget without going over the fiscal 23-year budget. So at this point, staff is requesting the village board approve the additional expenditures for the Waukegan Road Watermane Project, the amount of $193,479.09, bringing the total contract value to $4,253,469.19, which is a 4.8% increase of the original amount. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are they costed Deerfield further in surface?
Uh, no. Yeah, they own the road, they own the curb, everything that they're doing, however, the watermane, the sanitary items that are within that road, we do them. So if there's replacements of frames, for instance, that would be on us. If there's a replacement of any of those items that pertain to that, maybe we need to rebuild a structure that may fail, that would be on us. However, anything concrete, asphalt, or related to storm sewer is 100% on the, on the department of transportation.
So we don't anticipate even more additional classes from some kind of drainage as they repaved the road?
We did budget a small amount, 24, for those additional expenditures. We do encounter those, we will have the funds budgeted to replace that. But as far as the overall Waukegan Road project, anything north of Deerfield Road is still old watermane. If we do have an issue with that, obviously, that would be very shocking. We don't anticipate anything. However, it should be realized that anything south of Deerfield Road is still old watermane. It's not uncommon, and if you've seen them driving resurface jobs before, life insurance part three, if there's like four or five watermane breaks within a mile stretch after IDOT came through and resurfaced. So while that watermane is, you know, is in better shape than north of Deerfield Road, hence why we did that section, it is still old, and when you resurface a project, it's not uncommon to have a, have an issue with a watermane break, which we would then obviously be responsible to repair.
Right. I know this isn't why you're here, but what's the timing for the resurfacing? April 2?
Still, we're still looking at April. What makes a contract?
Maybe one time.
Into September.
Thank you.
So it will be impacting high school. You know, we unfortunately got in the ground a little bit this fall as well, I believe when it began, coming up, but we have talked with them, we've had a pre-construction meeting with IDOT in December, I believe it was December, and we did bring up the vicinity of the high school. They're going all the way up to 20th Street, so unfortunately, that's kind of right through the heart of the project.
And again, grind and overlay, so you might have moving lane restrictions, but you can drive on the grooved pavement that they grind down, right? So unless they're actually operating there, it's a bubble obstruction, not a, lane's gonna be closed for the next six months.
Yeah, that's the difference between the Waukegan Road project, where we had lanes closed day, night, for months at a time. This one will be, as canceled, moving lane closures. There may be overnight lane closures, so they'll do any concrete work, but the vast majority of it is grinding over, so they'll be moving lane closures, picking up the oils at the end of the day, trying to keep traffic more flowing.
They did this project south of Lake Cook Road two years ago, so if you haven't experienced that, that's kind of the driving experience that we're gonna have here through town.
Double motion is removed.
Second.
Welcome, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Metz Childers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Adding 2406, a resolution authorizing the increase to Phase 3 Engineering Services contract for Waukegan Road Watermane Project.
So part two in this series. As we know, we also had a Phase 3 contractor, I'm sorry, consultant engineering consultant that managed the project for some of Waukegan Road. They were in charge of inspections, documentations, making sure that contractors followed the specifications that were outlined when we went out to bid, traffic control, things like that. So anytime there's a contractor or a crew on site, and as you know, there are multiple crews, including at nights sometimes, they have, they assign inspector, because everything, everything they do gets big. So it's important to be with those crews while they're doing their work, so that we can document and inspect everything that is needed. So as the project progressed, the contractor began to realize that they were starting to slip in their schedule, so they started adding the crews, started working 10-hour days. Saturdays were fully in play on us from the get-go, which we did not anticipate. Therefore, the contract, the consultants' hours that they bill, obviously also skyrocketed. So unfortunately, that, this is also over. And we've talked with the consultant regarding this overage, and we've discussed a $100,000 supplement to the original contract, which the original contract was $300,000, so this is a fairly much higher of a percentage than the construction, but just the staff time that was needed out there, and the additional work that we added to the project and the duration. So it is worth noting also that we did take liquidated damages from the contractor due to the time, the additional time that it took to complete the project, and that is helping offset some of this cost. So the contractor's number you saw included those liquidated damages.
So how much over budget are we for Phase 3 engineering?
Well, a few parts to that. So we budgeted, we rerouted, let's just say, $300,000. We had budgeted $340,000, and we're gonna be basically bringing the contract value to $393,000.
So it's $50,000 over.
Correct. But it's also worth noting that efficiencies were we Correct, but it's also worth noting that efficiencies, where we had other projects in our professional services, um, line item that did not reach their full value, and so we are, again, similar to the construction, we are adding to this cost, but as a whole, remaining under the fiscal twenty-four.
So you had a question?
Yep, we did. The November interconnect.
Twenty-nine is after the application of the liquidated damage.
That's correct. Liquidated damage was applied to the contractors. Since they were responsible, we took that, those all of these, we took that out of there. So those would have been higher, had we not taken those liquidated damages. So staff is requesting the village board authorize an increase of the phase three engineering services contract for the Waukegan Road water main project in amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Move ahead.
Second.
Well, concrete.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Matt Schelbers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Tyler, do you need to make a resolution authorizing Hazel Avenue utilities met with Metro?
Yep, so as you know, through the various budget meetings, um, we have the Hazel Road infrastructure project planned for two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we, in September, we got federal funding, four point seven million dollars to offset that, about nine million dollar cost. So, uh, trains around the tracks, we're looking at twenty-five, um, to make this, uh, project to happen. So part of this work is obviously, uh, the water main from Waukegan Road to Lomond. So that will go onto the Metro tracks as well, uh, which does require a pipeline agreement with Metro. Uh, we did this in two thousand nineteen, uh, with Greenwood, when we did the water main there, um, and we're giving something similar then, uh, with, with Hazel now. Uh, the current one, which is on the south side of the road, was from nineteen forty-eight, and obviously, we're moving it away from that one and start new, so hence we need to need pipeline agreement with Metro. Um, and it does cost twenty-five hundred dollars for them to prepare and execute the agreement. Uh, so at this point, staff recommends that the mayor and board of trustees adopt the resolution for an easement agreement for underground utilities on Hazel Avenue with Metro, so that the village can allow the village to complete the agreed upon water main work.
Drive a motion.
Can, can I ask a question first? Am I reading this correctly, um, Tyler? The agreement with Metro is in fact, Metro decides to make some kind of changes to their property? Um, the only one that comes to mind is if they would decide, as we've discussed off and on for many years, putting a third main track in there, and they needed to excavate where we have this easement, and we have our water main, and they took out our water main, we would be responsible for paying the cost of replacing that water main? Did I read that correctly?
We would, and that's, that's typical for an easement agreement.
Is it?
For them to do it for low rate, uh, we had North Shore gas, we had ComEd an hour right-of-way. Uh, we required them to relocate for improvement of ours.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we are going to be, I wish I could read this, you know, in clear, but we're going to be more than just a few feet underground. I mean, it's going to be twelve, twelve feet deep or something like that from the thing.
So this is more standard than?
So, so we'll put a final, final point on what Tyler said. It is, it is uncommon for an easement in most situations. We would, if we were negotiating these with any other, almost any other party, we would try to make provisions in there, and make, once they grant us, we can't, they can't interfere, and we'd have some protections.
Right.
The issue here is the other party on this, this side has all the leverage, and they have a standard easement agreement, and it's non-negotiable. So we, we tried to, you know, in the past, we've tried to push back on these provisions. You know, it is not the most ideal, but it's taking a lead, and so we are in a lot of dealer positions. If they decide down the road, which is unlikely, but if they want us drawn, or they want to damage, do something that's going to cause us to have to redo it, that is the risk we would be taking.
Okay.
And it, and it's not like, you know, the pedestrian bridge downtown. If that was the, you know, that's a significant investment in the village, and with a significant dollar cost. This, it wouldn't, it would not be that expensive if we had to move some water valves back, you know, further away to put a third rail in. Um, I think that the scenario that would require us to redo that would be almost an accolade crossing, you know, under, which I don't see that, but I think we'd be thrilled if it did. So we'd be happy to move water main at that point, and.
Okay, now I just wondered if it was stated. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move ahead.
Second.
Well, concrete.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Matt Schelbers?
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And the twenty-fourth early, resolution awarding contract for two thousand twenty-four street rehab project.
Hmm.
So in, uh, when we were assembling, we opened seven sealed bids for the two thousand twenty-four street rehab project, um, which is one of the better shillings we've had in recent memory. Um, and concrete contractors came in at just over four million dollars, and they were apparently a bit better. Um, engineering department has prepared all the specification and contract docs, and we will be overseeing construction. Uh, this generally includes minor water main, storm sewer repairs, um, heavy roadway reconstruction, so curb, gutter, sidewalks, expansion, roadway replacements. Uh, we've got some resurfacing locations as well. Um, and we're looking to start that here sometime in, uh, about probably April, with a completion date more later than September thirtieth as well. Uh, the two thousand twenty-four street rehab project will be funded through a combination of funds, uh, primarily two point seven million dollars from the MFT funds, uh, one point two four of rebuilding and land bond funds, and then a hundred thousand dollars from the village's IRF fund, or IRF. Um, the hundred thousand dollars is the sidewalk program that we do inward. Uh, we fold that into our street rehab project over the last five years. We've done so, and to get better, better, I would say, unit prices, um, we're able to do that, that way. So the only, uh, local funds do use for those sidewalk, uh, indoor, indoor sidewalk programs. So, and that is, uh, pre-qualified by IDOT, uh, and they've successfully completed many recent roadway reconstru-, uh, projects, including twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, uh, street rehab projects, as well as Redford Avenue in two thousand twenty, Deerfield Road in two thousand sixteen, and so on. Uh, at this point, staff recommends that the contract for the two thousand twenty-four street rehab project be awarded to eight concrete contractors in amount of four million, forty-seven thousand and six dollars.
So the pricing came in better this time?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's what I forgot to mention, but yeah, we, we delayed, we did not execute the contract this year. And one of the reasons why we thought we, we did so is because we thought we'd get economiescale, putting that work into a larger project, and we didn't.
This is a lot of work, too. Um, I see that most of these areas are, um, substantially away from Waukegan Road. Was that deliberate?
Uh, well, you know, we've had a lot of.
In terms of staggering?
Yeah, kind of feels like, uh, two thousand eighteen, it was spread, it was spread.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, just to be able to move people throughout town. I mean, that really is a concern.
The only, the only close one's Orchard, and obviously, we're, we're going to be, if that's, goes beyond the contract rate, we don't want to be there at all until IDOT's done.
Right.
So we'll, we'll wait for them to be completed, um, so that they're not driving their trucks when anything on our new pavement.
Well, that's great. I'm sure residents do appreciate that we are thinking of that.
Is there a motion?
Move ahead.
Second.
Well, concrete.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Matt Schelbers?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And the twenty-fourth early, a resolution authorizing the purchase of bulk rock salt for the only department of central management services in Lake County.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, so we do purchase rock salt, uh, from, uh, through two joint bids. Uh, one is, uh, central management services, that's basically IDOT, uh, and the other is Lake County joint bid. Uh, and the Lake County joint bid is, um, a, a group of Lake County municipalities that have gotten together, uh, with, with the county itself, uh, and, and we put together a, a joint bid. Uh, this, that's a relatively new concept, uh, probably the last, say, eight years or so. Uh, what we did, uh, as you know, um, rock salt is, is typically, uh, we typically agree to purchasing rock salt in March. Uh, so the, the rock salt that we have before us tonight, uh, was agreed to last March, uh, with the county and with the state. Uh, we don't have a crystal ball, so we kind of throw a dart and figure out how much, uh, how much rock salt we need for the upcoming season. Um, and, and sometimes that works out well for us, other times we have balance. Uh, so last year, we did, we had a very mild winter. Uh, we had, uh, about eight hundred, uh, tons that were left over from the last, uh, the last purchase. Uh, right now, uh, about, about six hundred tons. Uh, so we're, we're obligated to purchase that six hundred tons, uh, plus an additional twenty-three hundred tons that we've, uh, we've obligated our village to, uh, under, uh, both the joint bids. Uh, so, uh, the, the joint bids came in, uh, numbers are a little bit higher than, than normal. Uh, that's, that's not surprising. Uh, they're, they're kind of all over the board. Some years they're high, uh, some years they're low. Uh, we've seen this high, one hundred eighty dollars, uh, a ton, um, and, uh, now we're at about eighty. Uh, five years ago, we were around forty-eight, uh, fifty, eighty, somewhere in there. So it really, it really varies greatly, uh, depending on, uh, a number of different factors. Uh, so, uh, with that, uh, we do have, um, right now, uh, we typically have about fifteen hundred tons worth of storage. Um, that public works, uh, and most of you have seen that building. Uh, and right now, we have around seven hundred, seven, eight hundred tons, um, in, uh, in, in, in the yard. Uh, we also have eight hundred tons on order, uh, so we're in good shape for the season. Uh, and we'll just have to see how the season shapes up, um, you know, whether we receive all this rock salt, uh, the, the additional twenty-three hundred tons plus the six hundred, um, or if we, you know, have to hold some more over again until next year. Uh, but either way, uh, the state and the county will both be asking us for numbers in March. Uh, so, uh, so they'll, they'll break out a crystal ball again and figure out how much we need. Um, but with that, uh, with that, we're requesting, uh, the purchase of rock salt, uh, and, uh, that the village will adopt the resolution to purchase rock salt, uh, through compass mater-, uh, compass minerals, uh, and through molten salt, uh, in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, this is a budgeted expense. Any questions?
Where do we, uh, put the, the beet juice or the other bio mineral juice that comes in, is that a subject that comes into it?
So we don't, we don't actually bid, uh, put that up to bid. Uh, we just receive, uh, price quotes for that. Uh, we've been purchasing that, uh, from Gasway Services recently, um, and, uh, we have storage for that. We, um, we, we only store about eight thousand, uh, gallons of, of liquid. Uh, we do store some calcium chloride, which is our lower, uh, temperature liquid, and then some salt brine, uh, which is. So the lower temperature liquid, the calcium chloride is, uh, down to about negative thirty. Uh, and then, uh, the, the salt brine is, uh, from, say, ten degrees up to freezing temperature. Uh, so we, we have the two, uh, both from Gasway, um, and, and also budgeted for it in, in the same chemicals account in, uh, Snow and Ice.
So that's a separate purchase.
That's a second purchase, yeah.
But we have space where people are going to hold this for us.
We do, so, so the rock salt, uh, we get, uh, as needed. Uh, so right now, uh, we ordered eight hundred tons, uh, so somewhere in the world, uh, there's eight hundred tons that are on the road coming to the village.
Okay.
Um, and, 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 and that'll be, that'll be delivered, um, we've been had seven days to deliver that.
Okay.
Uh, we ordered some Friday, we ordered some Monday, uh, and, and so within seven days. And then we start, there's the liquidated damages that get supplied and blah, blah, blah. So it's a pretty big process. Um, but, uh, so, so somewhere, uh, both molten salt, and we've seen molten salt buildings, um, and then cargo or compass minerals, uh, they're just over the border, uh, and they, they both have their storage facilities, and they bring it to us. Um, ultimately, that, that material has barged up the all-around river and through canals and everything up, uh, into these, these, uh, and that's, that's how it gets up into this region.
But it will be close enough for us to access what we need, and we would all have to take some home with us to hide, you know, this expense.
Pockets. Come on by for your pockets. Uh, but we, I, I mean, you know, getting the material, um, has and hasn't been an issue in the past. Uh, you know, it, it, we have had trucking issues, uh, we've had trucking strikes, uh, we've had, um, temperatures that don't allow trucks to get to us, uh, to deliver the material, uh, this river's freezing, the river's freezing over.
And the bikes.
But, but right now, we're positioned really well, so the rock salt in the area, uh, is live in storage, and, uh, I think we're, we're.
Okay.
And maybe that's partly of a, of a strategy of having two suppliers.
Yeah.
That, that came out of that tough year when we were looking at coming back, a hundred and twenty dollars, because nobody could get it. Yeah, and, and that, that material was, was trucked in from the east coast, I think, and some from Kentucky. Yeah. Um, but, but we're always, you know, rock salt is always somewhere in the process. We're either purchasing, we're looking to purchase, you know, we're, we're receiving, there's always something kind of. Well, we knew this summer time, there's contracts and everything that are kind of always happening, so it's a, it's a, it's a thing.
Take draw a motion.
Move ahead.
Second.
Well, concrete.
Um, trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yeah.
Trustee Matt Schelbers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mom. I was going to discuss a layer of board of trustees. Um, we had a storm a week or so ago, maybe a week and a half ago. We had extraordinary cold weather these last couple days, and the storms this week, and I wanted to make public work for all the hard work that you guys have put in to make their streets safe, with salting, pollinating, et cetera. We get comments, oh, Deerfield Road's, our, our claims imply better than the neighbors. We, we get that, and because you guys work so hard at doing that. Thank you so much. Um, and also, I, I said it earlier, and maybe I'm really proud of what this board did tonight with the Brussels ordinance. It shows both our planning and our foresight and our humanity for folks who need some help. So thank you for that. Um, that's all I got. Anyone got anything? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Uh, brother?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Tyler. Good night.
Good night, ladies.